Good evening, everybody. We just asked that if you have not checked in over there with your temperature and sent some check with Melissa, we will appreciate it. And if you don't ask, you just keep your mask on for the duration of the meeting with your mouth and nose covered.
Dr. Brenner?
Here.
Dr. Catula?
Here.
Mr. Caswell?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
Mr. Sefner?
Here.
Mrs. Shields?
Here.
Here. And Dr. Burke?
Here.
And then for the voting.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where which it stands, one nation, unified, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then would someone please do this statement, please?
Cultivating learners who apply skills and experiences to enrich society.
Thank you. And then we have full comments.
Kathy Brevin?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Rachel Mora, and I am a social studies teacher at Yorkville High School and the president of the Yorkville Education Association. I speak tonight as president of the YEA. To Dr. Schimpf and the Yorkville Community Unit Scholarship 115 Board of Education. The work put into the plan for reopening scenarios has been incredible. Dr. Schimpf, we appreciate your work and that of your team, along with the many staff members who are working so diligently to come up with plans for face-to-face learning, remote learning, and hybrid learning models. I have thought over those plans and have with many subgroups leaders on multiple occasions. To say that educators want to be back in the classrooms is an understatement. In-person learning is what is best for our students, not just academically, but for their social, emotional well-being. However, physical health and safety must be the top priority. And the Yorkville Education Association believes that as of today, having educators and students return to the buildings for the start of the coming school year will unnecessarily create an unsafe environment for many if safety protocols are not operational. That is why we believe at this time, remote learning is the best option. It is the recommendation of the YEA that we begin this school year in our remote learning model until the district is able to determine how to implement all safety protocols and procedures, which include having necessary supplies available in all buildings. As of the writing of this recommendation, we recognize that the plans for the districts are comprehensive and dangerous, but there are still some important unanswered questions in regards to safety of students and staff. As you are aware, the YEA recently conducted an internal survey, and seventy-seven point five percent of respondents replied to that, that they were in support of the YEA recommending to the district and the Board of Education that we begin the 2020-21 school year in remote learning, do specifically to safety concerns. We want to be transparent with each of you. We have a fraction of five-hundred-and-ninety times current numbers that we have yet to sign up in coming staff number, and with four-hundred-and-ninety-three respondents, we've had an eighty-three percent response rate. We do recognize and thank Dr. Schimpf for being a leader who is truly listening to the concerns of his staff and is working daily to help alleviate their well-known fears about safety when returning to the building. And we are hopeful that before the first day of school, the district will be able to have all safety protocols fully operational in every building. However, if safety protocols are not in place by the start of school, then we hope that the district and the board will agree that remote learning is best until those are operational. We appreciate the many suggestions that have been offered by the district in regards to safety, and we are looking forward to seeing those solutions come to fruition. I would also like to take this opportunity to state that safety implementation does not disrupt the hands of the district. The YEA understands that we have a dual responsibility in implementation of safety procedures. No safety protocols will be successful without the staff working alongside the district and vice versa. The YEA is committed to providing a high-quality education for our students. We are the experts in the classrooms at Y115. We will be able to deliver comprehensive learning experiences for our students through a reasonable and well-developed remote learning plan. We do not believe that we will be able to deliver a comprehensive learning experiences expected by the students and parents get students in the face-to-face model without fully addressing the first safety concerns. The YEA is fully committed to working to provide quality education for our students while upholding the safety conditions for our students and staff. Our productive working relationship with the district is one of which we are quite proud, and we look forward to continuing to collaborate as district one moves forward with the reopening plan and to continue implementation of safety protocols and procedures. Thank you.
We're taking this. Thank you, Rachel, very much for your presentation. And I think we all agree that the safety protocols have to be in place before the first day of school. And we are diligently working on making sure that's a reality, as well as making sure that we phase that in with students and not just dump all of them in your lab the first day. And of course, working collaboratively is the only way we're going to solve this. And I believe that we will be able to make that happen.
And we want to thank the hundred-member committee, six committees, a hundred members, administrators, staff, Rachel, who are part of that, teachers who are part of that, parents who are part of that. And we'll hear those plans later. And some of this, I also understand this is going to be addressed, many of the issues that Rachel has brought to you, and we are confident that we'll be able to address those, and hoping to even put additional layers of safety protocol to make sure everybody is safe. Rachel, I appreciated your comment. We're in this together. We all, every single one of us, have a timing what we do during the school day. It's what we do after school. It's what we do in the evening. And we all have to partner up, and we all have to be committed to these procedures so our kids can teach me to learn in the best environments, and giving our parents the flexibility and the needs so they can ensure their students can learn at their best ability. So if anyone else wants to add, we're going to talk more about these plans later on in the agenda.
Good. I believe we have the recognition?
All right. It's a little bit of fun. Thought that to follow Rachel, but I'll see what I can do. The first recognition I'd like to have come up is Sister Anthony Hansen. Anthony is a familiar face to many of us, as a parent, and a great supporter of our charity. The Board of Education recognizes Anthony Hansen for earning the Distinguished Service Award of Excellence from the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association for the work on behalf of Yorkville District 115. This award recognizes those who make a difference in their school community by helping promote public education and enhances programs and services. Nominees are valued on their ability to support or improve understanding and communication in the school or the district, foster cooperative partnerships between the school and community, and strengthen the overall support for education by stakeholders. Christine Liptrop, our communications person in the district, has the Distinguished Service Award as an opportunity for unknown deserving individuals persistently advocate for public education in our state. These individuals work tirelessly to highlight and validate successes in public schools. They understand the importance of building strong public relations and provide all members of the school community the opportunity to promote excellence and be champions of students and employees. School communicators from thirteen different states judge the entries against a criteria of excellence, and only those who receive top scores receive awards. Winning nominations either receive an award of merit, or for those receiving the highest evaluation, an award of excellence. The mission of INSRA is to provide source of connection, collaboration, and professional development for school communicators, and to strengthen support through all public schools, which leads to greater success. The 2020 Distinguished Service Award of Excellence goes to Anthony Hansen. Anthony has been a source of support as a PTO member in the district over the years, a CAC member. He's been on the Evolution 115 team, the transition team that we're speaking of tonight, and he was instrumental in the year in Yorkville website back in the spring. So thank you, Anthony. The next recognition I would like to call is for Christina Traub. The Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association presents the 2020 Distinguished Communicator Award to Christine Liptrop. In her decades of serving as a school communications professional, she's been an impactful champion for public education within a variety of districts she has served. In her current role, she's under the adoration of the school community as she balances the need to nurture and cultivate strong relationships while maintaining a tenacious and unwavering determination of continuous excellence and improvement. Throughout her years, Christine has demonstrated her ability to work with a critical eye for improvement, sometimes to my own demise, but still respects the opinion of others, the uniqueness of individuals and groups, and the needs of the organization over her own personal ideals or perspectives. Christine places such a high value and importance on communicating the truth, with both accuracy and good judgment, and works tirelessly to be proactive to ensure information is transparent, easily understood, and developed with such high levels of quality. The INSRA president, Carol Smith, who works in St. Charles 303, said Christine called to ask if I would serve as her president-elect. I knew it was a perfect opportunity to learn from a veteran strategist and leader. I've been proud to be part of the work of this board, as I witnessed Christine's ability to create a vision, set goals, and work with others to meet those goals. We are better chapters because of her leadership. In the words that I wrote weeks, months ago, I've been very appreciative of what she does in supporting District 115. While I look aside Christine very closely every day, I'm appreciative of her tight, loose style of leadership. She remains firm of the non-negotiables and makes sound decisions on behalf of the district while supporting the autonomy, ideals, and values of the college. Congratulations, Christine. And the last award is more of a district award, but certainly Christine was instrumental. And this is Dr. Burke's pointing the video that we made years ago, the South Park video. Christine worked with the company Plum Productions to create our Evolution 115 introduction. So we are presented, for Minnesota, Award of Excellence, presented to Yorkville 115 for distinguished achievement in a category of school district video produced with outside contact. Congratulations, Christine, and to the district.
And then, a committee report. We have working sessions and all the items found in the draft, and then we have the consent agenda and need all those items read, please.
Thanks, Terry.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Good afternoon.
There you go.
Okay. So, public contact that party approved the minutes of the June 22nd, 2024 Board of Education, giving the Activities Plan Report for June 2020, the final bills and claims for the June 2020 in the amount of one million four hundred thousand six hundred seventy-one and fifty-four cents, and the bills and claims for July 2020 in the amount of one million six hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred ninety-six, ninety-eight cents. A FOIA request received on July 10th, 2020, responded on July 15th, 2020, from Katie Finland at the Catalina County Record requesting all Yorkville School Board 115 survey results and candidates who schooled as your families and students related to returning to school via remote learning, in-person, or hybrid internship for the 2020-2021 school year in the short September 10th, 2018 executive session recording.
Second.
Move in second. Any additional comments? For a call, please. Dr. Catula?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. And Dr. Burke?
Yeah.
And then, a committee report.
Good evening. Good evening. Sorry, my bad. The treasures report today, I just wanted to focus on where we ended the year, June 20th. We haven't had our audited statements yet, but we ended the year much better than anticipated, and that's for a variety of reasons. We did have some favorability on the revenue side, and that was, and also two different things. We had about a million-dollar lower property tax payment than budgeted, and that was really due to the extensions that were given to our taxpayers in order to make those first payments later than originally anticipated when they were normally been needed to. We did have an offset there with some additional revenue from the state because we received four payments instead of the three that we had budgeted. And then we did have some favorability on the federal revenue side with some ideas when the reward came in favorable, as well as Medicaid fee for service, which is an area that we continue to focus on to diagnose in that area. On the salary side, we were one million dollars favorable. Seems like a big amount, but we have a forty-four million dollar budget for salaries. That's our biggest piece. So that's about ninety-eight percent accuracy, which is pretty close. And so we have some vacancies and some other things that caused us to spend less on salaries than we anticipated. On the benefit side, we were favorable by about one point five million dollars, and that was almost all due to our health benefit plan that we talked about every month, where we're trying to build that up to cover ourselves for any catastrophic claims that we may see in the future. We had one point five million dollars favorability for purchase services, and that was a vast variety of areas that planned. Obviously, they weren't running the buses for the last part of the year, so we saved money there. We saved money in food service. We saved money on that carrier. And then we also saved money in supplies, whole general supplies with that gas to go along with the, to go along with the transportation. And so net-net, we entered, we entered the year with a fund balance of fifty-seven point four million dollars, which was favorable both the prior year by about four million dollars and favorable to budget by about six point two million dollars. The most important part about that is that it puts us in good stead as we move forward and as we weather, you know, the additional costs that are going to be coming out as a part of COVID. So we're really happy that we're able to be in that position as a district to, to again, give ourselves, give ourselves some flexibility as we deal with that, what's coming up for the coming year. So that's really what I wanted to cover, and if anybody has questions.
Make a motion to approve the treasure report I presented. Second.
Move in second additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you close? On some captions? And then on to some personnel recommendations.
Thank you, Minnie.
I will take the first one, the substitute salary enhancement. As we've been having discussions about opening in the fall, you understand that the need for substitute teachers could very much be likely. In a typical year, we often run into a time where we have some shortage, but certainly as we head into this school year in the unpredictability, we're looking for additional ways to attract and retain substitutes not only for a short period of time, but over the course of school. Our neighboring district last week, I believe, recently passed a subrate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. And so we are proposing an increase in our district from 115 to 130, as well as an increased rate of a hundred and thirty-five dollars for those substitutes to demonstrate a commitment at the fifteenth day of substituting our district. And then we're looking also for the long-term substitute rate, moving from one sixty-five today, a day to one eighty-five for those that are on the PFMW and long-term needs. And we anticipate about a fifteen percent cost increase for the year total, so probably close to a hundred thousand dollars if you're typical members as.
Need a motion on the table?
Motion to approve the District 115 substitute teacher's daily rate increases as presented. Second.
Move in second additional comments? I'm interested as well at what's at the end, the supply looks like with such a heightened employment rate. We were battling very low unemployment, under, I mean, one, three percent of the state, so I'm interested to see what that, that labor supply flow is.
And we have, as part of the human relations group, I've asked Troy Portman, who has been to be serving as some current substitutes for last year, and we want that, seeking ways to advertise, assuming the board approves this, and then putting a comprehensive training plan in place, and that will be for the day-to-day typical thing we would try to substitute for obviously, the health, safety, and protocols are going to be placed.
So move in second. Any additional comments? Real call, please. Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Catula?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yeah.
And then next is the YEA president release.
This is a recommendation that I'm making after speaking with my president, Rachel, even from earlier today, and the cabinet members, that takes Rachel's current release of a point four, and I am recommended for this coming school year that we support a 1.0 full release for Rachel. As we've talked about, and we'll continue to talk about, that a strong relationship that needs to happen between the YEA members and the board and the district administration. We feel that having access to Rachel throughout the day when things come up, we can make decisions quicker. We can be proactive and preventative in some of that areas that might prevent some larger issues from happening. So I take it solely supported by Rachel and the YEA, supported by the administration, and we'd like your vote.
Motion to approve the YEA president 1.0 full-time equipment releases presented. Second.
Move in second additional comments? Real call, please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Catula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yeah.
Applied tech program.
Motion to approve the Applied Tech Programming Plan as presented. Second.
Move in second additional discussion?
I just wanted to mention before, to make sure that they're fully aware of this is a, I'm very hard to fill position. We had a resignation, and we've had this posting out for over a month. So the high school, understanding how soon and how quickly this school year is approaching, has put forward recommendations for some restructuring. That does include Mr. Wyatt, assuming the department chair responsibilities, as a request for a point two overload. And also, we have a tentative agreement to have a retired teacher retire to help fill some responsibilities.
Real call, please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Catula?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burke?
Yeah.
Then we have a co-curricular resignation. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the co-curricular resignations as presented. Second.
Move in second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you close? On some captions? And then we have some co-curricular hires.
Motion to approve the co-curricular hires as presented.
Second.
Move in second. Any additional discussions?
Yeah, these depend on these sports actually taking place, right?
Should that be part of?
That should be part of the.
That should be part of the motion, I think.
So, can we amend the motion?
I'm going to amend the motion, of course.
Yeah, let's.
I would amend the motion to approve the co-curricular hires as presented, given the state of these sports taking place throughout the fall and winter.
Move in second additional discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, I've asked Troy Portman, there's a, there's a committee that works each year when there's proposals for stipends or changes, financial changes, that they come together any assembly in January. I've asked Troy to bring that group back together. There's a lot of conversations, a lot of questions related to, if we don't have athletics this year, activities at clubs, do they give a year's worth of credit going into next year, even in all possible, if we get stipends? You know, we're allowed to have, you know, no IHSA-sponsored activities, but they say if you want to continue to do strength and conditioning or skill development, you know, is on our stipends pro made or, I think there's a lot of questions out there. And I think it's, do you feel, do you feel just need to bring our committee together with the coaches involved, with the athletic directors, with our activities directors, and then come back to the board with a recommendation?
So you better table this motion.
Well, I think you can approve it on the contingency, you know, what's going to happen to future. We're not going to, if the board approves these, and we have basketball, we don't have to bring basketball back. So we're not going to move forward with either stipends or other board approval.
You'll probably bring another motion based on.
Yeah, and here's a list for the year, here's a plan for the year, or at least for the fall.
Their coaches were putting in a ton of work right now.
Right, and that's what you're going to bring back.
They're prepared for something that may or may not happen, so they're bringing in a ton of work.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we will not pay anybody for this coming school year until we bring the board back the direction we're going by sport, by club activity, or as we want to.
And that even is, we had our summer work session one day. That's the whole, everything is fluid.
Yeah.
All positions, because the structure is fluid. The structure could change, which means your needs are different.
Absolutely.
Well, everything is fluid.
Absolutely.
So we got to do.
Do you want another?
No, no, no.
Yeah, the motion on the table is to approve this contingent on future movement with the board.
Correct, correct, correct.
And so, that real call, please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Caswell?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Catula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yeah.
Then we have some confirmations. Uh, then we have some terminations.
Motion to approve the terminations as presented. Second.
Move in second additional discussion, but let's do a roll call.
Mr. Cazewell?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yes.
And then we have some resignations.
Motion to approve the resignations as presented. Second.
Move in second, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I would just like to say real quickly about that, I'm, I'm happy for Jeff Fersy, who is the AD at the middle school. Jeff has done a really terrific job over the years. I've worked with him personally through youth football and, uh, sad to see him leave, but I know he's got good things coming his way as his principal as new position.
He's been a very loyal person to Yorkville, and I know I talked to him a few times. Um, when Lisa's been involved in, um, that was the executive content of that. And again, I can see what Lisa has wrote about Jeff and what, uh, he's done for Yorkville Middle School and for Lisa. And high school, yes.
Years of high school.
That's right, years ago.
Yeah, I really liked how he found his niche with that junior high job and just got around with it, almost like it wasn't high school. So yeah, he's definitely like a few minutes. They'll, they'll like to go down the white seat, give us a fair.
Alright, um, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You pose? Motion passes. And then we have some hires. So need a motion on the table, please?
Motion to approve the hires as presented. Second.
Move in second and any additional discussion?
I'm sorry to see former students of mine pop up on the hire list.
Uh, real call please.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Cazewell?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yeah.
And then we have a summer school hire.
Um, look there, we, that's our.
Sorry.
Just a leftover summer school hire that we have.
Okay. Motion to approve the summer school hires. Second.
Move in second and any discussion? Uh, real call please.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Cazewell?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yeah.
And then on to new business, and first agenda item is the district one fifteen twenty twenty one fall reopening plan and remote e-learning.
So I will begin and I'm going to turn over to Dr. Baughman, um, as the board and our community and everyone in a sense here note. Um, this has been going on for, for months, uh, long before ISBE, or IDTH came out with their guidance on June twenty-third. Uh, our committee started, um, end of May, beginning, beginning of June with six subcommittees and one oversight team. And if you look to the oversight team, certainly very, um, well represented with parents, some in the audience tonight. And some of the administrators, uh, YEA representatives and leadership. So very proud of the, the work that they all, the time, the effort, the energy and the ideas that they gave, um, to the process. And then you can see we had six sub-team leads in those areas and I know the board's very aware as our plan is revolving around those six areas. And all the questions and the plans, the implementation procedures, the protocols, all within each of those areas. Um, but again, um, great representation across the district and all the gap categories. For every member that requested to participate, we took them, we didn't exclude anybody. Um, we had a couple of people who dropped out just for personal reasons, identity reason. But we were all inclusive and, and everyone gave a different, unique perspective for the work that we had and ahead of us. If you go back to the Restore Illinois Plan. This is very much in alignment to the work that we have done and will continue to do so. When you look at phase one and two where we were last spring. Where only our social employees were on campus or our facilities. The rest of our students were e-learning from home. We moved to phase three, this was in June of this year, where we were starting to be allowed to have small pockets of individuals, kind of less. Um, we were given the opportunity to do some e-learning, or excuse me, face-to-face learning onsite. We chose not to in the district, in the month of June, to wait and see how things fall out. And then for the athletics and clubs and activities, we were just waiting for, for direction, um, as we moved through the summer. Phase four is already on out, fifty people or less. Um, this is, I can't have opened up at the high school and the middle school level. Um, we've had pockets of teams of fifty or less, obviously with masks for distancing. Um, and it gives more of an opportunity for, um, different models of instruction to occur. I think as we are moving forward, um, we're going to be very mindful of the governor's phases. Uh, we are going to adhere, adhere to IDTH, we're going to adhere to the ISBE guidelines as we have done from the very beginning. This is not a decision that are made in isolation. These are not decisions that, you know, superintendents, and executives sit, sit back and say, we're going to go this direction because we have a goal. We've been, we've been monitoring the IDTH website at various ages, we're tracking the data. And we're taking ISBE, ISBE guidelines and those from the IDTH. We have the most recent update, um, from the, of the CDC as well as the ISBE last week. Uh, both have suggested that if able to do so, we should be sent back to school. Obviously, the distancing guidelines, the safety and, and health-related protocols in place. Uh, maintaining groups of fifty or less, all those things that are spelled out in phase four of the Restore Illinois Plan. I think it's very important for our community, our staff, our board to know that at any point in time, we can revert back to phase three or phase two or phase one. We just don't know. It could happen between now and the start of the school year. It could happen for a school, a classroom, where we have to shut down one building, you have to shut down a group of kids or a classroom. And move them back to phase three, if you will, and send them home for a period of time until we get an indication from our health department. Uh, and other sources that, um, it's safe to go back. So this is going to be very fluid, it's going to be fluid throughout the school year. It could change by the time we start this progress plan. So what we're going to present tonight, um, is the three scenarios that we are going to recommend to start the twenty twenty-one school year. As you can see on the slide. If we are in phase one and two, we're going to, it's going to be called restricted, that's the scenario. Or basically the e-learning, although the essential workers come in on campus. If the governor puts us back into phase three, then it's like an e-learning remote. Or we could have alternative schedules. There might be certain individuals, targeted students, pockets of some of our primary learners that come in for a period of time. Again, maintaining the ten or less, social distancing, but getting some of the human interaction. What we are advocating for, for the start of this year is the choice scenario. Or as long as we're in phase four and phase five for the governor's plan. And as long as our general county, the health department, IDTH, and the board of education here deems it's, it's safe to be in school with restrictions parameters. We will go with the three options. We are going to share with you tonight the schedule of our e-learning remote that a family can choose. The onsite face-to-face option that a family can choose, or the hybrid blended, which would be a combination of both. So that's our, our focus for this evening. When we get to the end and after the board asks questions, then we, there's going to be a resolution that I would ask that the board approve. And what that resolution grants is giving me the autonomy, after speaking with Dr. Burke and the board. To make a decision very quickly, should we have revert for a building, a classroom, or a district to another mode, to another scenario. Instead of having to call a special board being, coming back and doing that. I would never make a decision in isolation, I would never make a decision without communicating and getting a recording from the board. Um, but just from a time standpoint, and to be able to respond effectively, you'd ask that resolution be done. So at this point in time, I'm going to throw it to Dr. Baughman, who's going to go over each of the options. By the grade level spans for the choice scenario.
Thank you, Dr. Schimpf. Um, as Dr. Schimpf mentioned, the academic subcommittee has been working to create three options for families to choose from. One option being an e-learning option, the other one is an onsite option. And the third option, each, each at various levels, um, we're referring to as a hybrid or a hybrid blended option. Um, I'll start with the elementary and then move on to middle and then to high school and show some sample schedules, um, for our board and for our community. Um, but the first distinction that I would like to make is that e-learning itself will be a much more rigorous experience for our students than when we first went into phase one or two of the plan in the fourth quarter. And so if an elementary family opts for the e-learning option, their students will be asked to participate in five hours of daily instruction. Which includes ninety minutes of live Zoom calls with the teacher. And then the rest of the courses are facilitated through consistent online platforms that we of the district, um, have, have purchased. One is a platform for early childhood, your second grade students called Seesaw, and the other one is Google Classroom.
You have this, you have this document in front of you, right? You paid for it from the vault?
Uh, there also is a physical education requirement, that students participate in a hundred and fifty minutes of PE or health-related activities that will be completed independently at home. And students can then choose one of their specials courses, which is IOP, art or music. If a family did want to choose more than one, we would allow for that division, for our expectation is that they must participate in at least one of those specials. Where attendance is required to receive a grade. From an elementary onsite standpoint, we have, um, developed safety protocols and restrictions. So if families choose the onsite option, um, it will be a regular school day, approximately twenty-five to three twenty-five or eight thirty-five to three thirty-five. Uh, depending on if it's a grade score, an elementary score or an intermediate school. We will have, um, an integrated curriculum, so we're integrating, um, ELA with science and social studies. This did a couple of things for us, it allows for us to create, um, some cross-disciplinary experiences. But also freed up time and schedule for additional things like transition, social emotional learning. At a different, um, time and pace in which, um, students, things just take time to wash hands and follow proper safety and health protocol. Um, we also are recommending that lunches happening in the classrooms. Um, and also we have staggered recess times throughout the day. And so we'll have specific zones at a recess that, um, students are allowed to be in, uh, which will help us control for social distance. Our students, um, also have the option of a hybrid schedule. And this is basically students attend in-person three hours a day to get their academic core instructional areas. Um, but then they will also have to complete two hours of independently synchronous practice, which will be engaging, uh, with our curriculum online. Via a variety of different platforms, um, or teacher-created assignments. Uh, and all three of the items are in the options. Um, we will be following the same district curriculum and students will be, um, participating in the same assessment, um, process and protocol to ensure a rigorous experience that is accountable. From a middle school perspective, uh, we still have the same or similar three options, uh, for families to choose from, uh, with the researchings, uh, in place that we had mentioned. Um, from a middle school perspective, um, I want to share a schedule with you to help me explain, uh, the difference between a hybrid option in a middle school and that of an elementary school. In an elementary option, students would come for half a day in the morning or the afternoon and participate in academic instruction, uh, also with a recess in there. For a middle school hybrid option, our families have the choice to choose between a core team flex instructional plan, to take those in-person or online. But they can also choose to take the PE or electives in-person or online as well. The core team flex instructional block of the day, um, is co-planned by teachers. And with, with allowing them to have flexibility to, uh, move between content areas in an interdisciplinary approach. Uh, this is an instructional shift for us, uh, in our approach to, um, our core content areas. But we believe our teachers, when they co-plan together, can have more freedom to choose how much time they're spending in each content area as appropriate to meet those standards. And so in this example, uh, if a family chose to, um, the hybrid option and they wanted to come in-person for core team flex instruction. They would show up in the morning, uh, they would then participate online for their PE and/or elective course, uh, options. That could also be reversed, families could also choose to come to school for their PE and/or elective options. Or they could choose and then take their core team flex instruction time, um, at home. Uh, we still have an e-learning option, uh, that's available for our families as well. Um, and also, um, a full onsite option, uh, for our families to choose from. Um, from a high school perspective, uh, we still have the, the three models that the high school students can choose from. Uh, e-learning, onsite, or hybrid, um, in-person. The hybrid model, um, is the preferred model of the high school, meaning, um, students will attend two days, uh, in-class, in-person. And then attend remotely, uh, for two days. This allows us to limit the number of students that are on, uh, campus at any given time to allow for greater social distancing. Uh, from a scheduling perspective, as we had discussed, uh, at the previous, at the previous, uh, working session, um, with the board. We've modified and changed the schedule so it's visually cleaner, um, understandable to families. And so in this example here, uh, students would be assigned to a team, uh, this example is calling Team Box and Team Den. There we go. Thanks, Professor. Um, in this example here, uh, on Monday and Tuesday, which represented in the white columns, students would be assigned to a team, Team Box or Team Den. Um, the Team Box would then come to campus, um, on Monday and Tuesday, while the students that are in Team Den would, uh, participate in their class remotely. They would go through their entire schedule, odd periods on Monday and, um, even periods on Tuesday, in an eighty-five minute, uh, block schedule, uh, format. Which allows for less transition times throughout the course of the day. Then students would then switch, and those that were in Team Box would now participate in, uh, in their education on campus. And then, uh, Team Den would participate, um, in their, excuse me. Team Box would be remotely and Team Den would be on campus. So basically, it's two days on, uh, and, and then two days, uh, remote instruction. We still have the option for families, uh, who want to come in, uh, every single day, that is an option, uh, for families as well. But we also have the option for families who want to participate a hundred percent remotely, um, to also be able to do that, um, as well. And so we do understand that, uh, a lot of professional development needs to be required in order to have a rigorous, uh, experience and a block schedule. Something that's going to be new for our staff and we're developing lesson templates, of course, blueprints and also professional development sessions. Um, so staff is prepared to teach, uh, within this new, this new, this new model. Uh, we also understand that our grading practices, um, will need to be evaluated. And so we're bringing groups back together, um, to ensure that we have a rigorous assessment system that promotes accountability, engagement and also equity, uh, for our students. So I'll be bringing back information to the board to report out, um, what, what has happened during that committee and make any recommended changes, uh, if necessary.
Part of this slide, I want to just share a few more things related to the schedule. As we've been talking and getting fielding questions from the association or union as we're looking at training parameters and protocol, we've had some discussion at the district level about, as we start the school year, to do some possible staggered schedules for kids. And I don't mean, you know, out, you know, two, three weeks. But when we look at the August twentieth start date, we're maybe an opportunity for us to bring together, you know, our EC two kids on that Thursday and Friday. And then on Monday, Tuesday, they would stay home with another group of kids to come in for the rest of school. We look at it by grade level. Our K three buildings might be a little bit different how they break that up. And our J sixes might be a little bit different, as well as our four, five, six. Same thing with the middle school. We might bring our seventh graders in on the twentieth and twenty-first, do training, have them go through lunches, drop off and pick up, and then flip and have our eighth graders come in the next few days. While the kids are at home, they would then also be expected to do the remote learning part of it. So all of our teachers would be in the building. All our teachers would be interacting with kids. But it would also give an opportunity, from the remote standpoint, if we have to make a quick transition to the class, to the school, they at least have some understanding of what that might look like. I think the value we'll bring to staff into our building is we can do things collectively, observe, troubleshoot before then. What I would recommend, like August twenty-sixth, everybody's there all day. That's supposed to be, as first in person, or active day, kind of a, it's true. It's something that I've asked our principals to give consideration to. We're coming back together with them on Thursday of this week. So we'll have more dialogue around that. It might be an idea that goes flat, and we say that it's a course that we have proposed. But I don't see anything else drastically changing with the schedule. And I understand parents need to make plans, daycare, child care. So we're going to make a decision fairly quickly, and then we communicate that back out to the board and to our community. The other thing I'd like to share is that, as we look at the health and the wellness piece of it, as well as the academic, there's going to be great need for us to monitor the outcomes, monitor the progress that we're making, or areas concerned. So I am going to be proposing that we bring together two separate committees, two monitoring committees. One will focus on academics, and one will focus on health and wellness. I see these much like our oversight team, but adding other community members, from our healthcare professionals, from our Kenton County Health Department, possibly IDH, possibly a business leader or two, to give perspective of what's going on in the community of businesses. And from a health and wellness standpoint, we would spend time twice a month, either virtually or in person, looking at what the numbers are showing in the area, looking at the district health data, looking at, obviously, with privacy, but looking at what's going on with our employees, what's going on with our students from a health standpoint, our guidelines, our parameters, our protocols. And then from an academic standpoint, we would be looking at those things that we've looked at for academic success, for the assessment data, grades, student performance, student engagement. And we look at our counseling numbers, we look at our attendance rates, midpoint satisfaction surveys for parents. I think it's been really important for us as a district to come together as a community and have some indicators of success, indicators of progress, or certainly indicators of things are going astray, and we need to maybe change gears. We can be proactive, we can be preventative, and we can be able to share more relevant data with the board and our community. And I do think that will also help if we start talking about anxiety and stress and fear of returning, if we know that we have people that are constantly monitoring it, and then we will proactively make some changes if necessary. Heather, you want to talk to somebody on this slide?
Sure. What do you want to say? About you did, securing over what we're doing in order?
Just where we are, and when we look at the, from the safety and hygiene standpoint and ordering, and I know that's on a lot of people's minds about, you know, do we have access to the supplies? Do we have the things in today? We have barriers up to be, have plexiglass in our offices.
So we do have all certain supplies available. We have hand sanitizer, we have the suit button wipes, we have gloves, everything that we had at the end of the school year, we've been able to maintain and keep over the summer. So we do have all that available for the students and staff. We also are adding more of what we used to have. So where we used to have hand sanitizer in certain areas of the school, we'll have more of that available throughout, can you hear me? Sorry, more of that available throughout each building. We are going to be installing protective barriers in each school. So we'll be having them in the front offices. And we will also be having them secretary's desks. We'll have them in the libraries, at the circulation desks. We are doing that. We have also purchased urinals, like their screens going between each urinal throughout the whole district and for sinks. So we'll have that as well. We are in the process of creating classrooms that are six feet distancing between desks. Once we hear back from the parents from the survey, then we'll be able to have an exact on what each room and the amount of students will be in those rooms. But we're waiting for that to come back. But we do have a template for each school that we would like to use.
I think that's a, the six-foot distancing, if you look at the CDC, they talk about when feasible. When you look at the IDH and the I S P, they talk about when possible. We are going to make every effort. We're going to rely on our staff to help us do that, to keep kids six foot apart. It's not always going to be possible, it's just not. And I think that's important for the board to know, the board for a community to know, that they make decisions. But when you look at the other requirements of face masks being worn at all times, that's going to be really important. But we're going to do everything we can from a, you know, we're, Heather's been cleaning our classrooms. We have ordered forty-foot storage units that you're going to see over by the maintenance area. For all that stuff that's certainly in classrooms, it's going to go. And we're going to be asking our classroom teachers who have personal pouches and laundry chairs and comfort furniture, that's probably going to be most of it coming out, depending on the numbers of kids, obviously. We'll have to, we'll have to gauge that as our parents make choices and you can look at, maybe class sizes. We're going to be, we're reviewing section numbers. You know, there's some concerns that when you look at the middle school, historically, my classes would be at thirty-two or thirty-three at a middle school. And we'd be trying to say, can we limp through that for a semester? Or may not, may not be able to do that this year. But we're going to have to look at what sections are that size and what are the numbers of those families and those students who've selected the model that they've been, they've been all.
We're also going to be doing checklists for restrooms. So we'll have the custodians, and we have a checklist for every restroom. We have a checklist for the stairwells, everything being cleaned and disinfected. That'll be going through sensory rooms in the schools. So we'll have that, and they will have what they need to clean throughout the day on an hourly basis, and then sign off on that. So that is something that we're creating right now as well.
Can you figure out the A and P M for the kids who choose, the parents who choose a half day at the elementary level? We will have people coming in to clean those classrooms in between sessions. Heather's also looking at a UV device where you can put in a classroom, close the door for ten minutes, and it cleans the, disinfects the entire area.
So, yeah, we're looking at purchasing ten of those, one for each school, so that we're able to move that around and use that for A and P M kindergarten. Takes about ten minutes, so it'll help with the cleaning and disinfecting procedures for the schools. So trying to think of what else. I know a lot of people have questions about our H V A C. We have, first of all, I have our meeting supervisor. He helps me out a lot, David Yodelis, with the kids here today, with everything with H X. I learned a lot with him. And what we have is called a duct-free mini-split system. So we're able to have each room have their own thermostat, and each room has its own unit vest. And we're able to set each room separately. So by doing that, we're starting our systems a little bit earlier and ending them a little bit later every day. So that way, it helps keep more air movement in the building. We also have our outside air intake is usually at ten percent, and we're increasing that to thirty percent. So it's bringing more fresh air into the building and exhausting the building return air. So it helps remove the amount of recycled air in our classrooms and in our buildings. The exhaust fans are running longer to take that out. So that's also helping with what we're trying to accomplish. So I know that people have asked what we're doing for COVID cases. If we have a COVID case, as far as our H V A C is concerned, we do shut down the unit vests for a twenty-four hour period. That'll be the plan, to shut those down. And then while the custodians are cleaning, we'll close off all those areas. And then the filters will be removed, and then we'll put new filters in. And then we'll also use a spray, an ozone disinfectant spray on the new filter before we install it. So that is what we'll be doing for the twenty-four hour period in all the multiple classrooms that were affected. I beg your question.
So from a timeline standpoint, assuming we're hopeful for plenty of approval tonight from the board for the resolutions, we would be sending an email out tomorrow morning to all the families with the options in the description, fairly lengthy communication that will go out. After that, in order to make sure that we're not them barring families with the same document three different times if they have three students, by noon, they're going to get another email with their student's I P on it and a separate, so we'll find two kids and get two of these emails. But it won't be the entire document or the entire plan again. So that'll be by noon. Tomorrow night, we have a district one fifteen employee update. That'll be overseeing and facilitating and update all of our members, some employees of what's going on, where we're at. Dual A Z L is going to be having a meeting on Wednesday night that all of the cabinet members and some of our building leadership will be attending. Thursday, we are meeting with our principals this week from eight to one. Our monthly principals are coming in from a little bit earlier from their vacation, the summertime. And most of them haven't had a whole lot of that. And then our oversight team is meeting in the afternoon on that day. And then in the evening, our P T O, our boosters, will have a meeting. And we're going to ask for our families to return their decision or commitment by Friday at the end of the day, by five o'clock. If we do not hear from families, we're going to assume that they have chosen the onsite full attendance. Obviously, we will probably reach out to them after that, just to confirm and try and get some two-way interaction going. But for our numbers and planning purposes, that's what we will go with.
And for our high school students, the preferred option would be the hybrid schedule. So that would be the two days attendance and then two days virtually. I'm also outlined in that email. And we're asking for parents to commit for a nine-week period of time. And that way, if something changes, they can have another option to select for the second quarter, a different type of education model.
The last thing I want to share is, you know, regional practice of this survey that the union sent out. The district also sent, you guys have a copy of some results, your back to your packet. We sent the survey out of the district. A couple of things, there was six hundred and thirty roughly respondents. And they went out for certified and uncertified. We had fifteen percent that answered that they have a documented medical health condition that will put them at high risk to return face-to-face. Obviously, our H R department will be looking at, you know, roughly ninety people here from this survey and taking each, on a case-by-case basis, to determine what that health condition is and how they respond accordingly. Sixty-seven percent of the six hundred and thirty were either neutral or comfortable, you know, three, four, or five, and returned in partially, with sixty-seven percent. And then about fifty-one percent were comfortable returning to full in-person learning. They're either neutral at three, or four, or five, being uncomfortable or very comfortable. We asked if they, if they could choose what more learning would they prefer to work. Forty percent said face-to-face. Thirty-seven percent said remote, and then twenty-three percent said long distance. We asked if they'd be willing to teach a class outside of the normal workday. Some of those are conversations you have with the board. About thirty-eight percent said they would. So whether it's in the evenings or if it's on weekends, but I think it's always something we need to be considering, especially as if we have to transition to other modes or our county goes in a different direction, or we just use a better fit for our staff and our learners. But I think what that survey reminds us of is, as we get through this week and we start looking at parent responses, the really hard work begins of setting up and aligning what our staff is willing or able to do, or can't do, for that matter, some of them, with what our parents are asking for for their students. And how do we create those sections and structures and class sizes? So it's going to get really busy really quick, once this data continues to come in, starting tomorrow. I just want to say, I'm, as a superintendent, you know, you never wish this upon our kids, our staff, our community, you may, it just breaks your heart to watch kids go through this and our staff go through it. But I, I'd never want to be anywhere else to go through something like this. There's a amount of professionalism that our staff has shown, our parents have shown, and the emails of support. Regardless of where people feel they are, and won't be severe or can't do, there's been a tremendous amount of support by our union, by our parents, by our business leaders, our chamber. It's just never ending, and you as a board. So I just want to thank everyone who's contributed to the plan, who's given up countless dollars of time and energy. It's just, it's amazing, and it's overwhelming to think of the amount of how many people come to our, to the table and want to help out. And I just, I can't thank our community enough. It's only going to get harder, but there's no doubt we're going to prevail. We're going to do really good things for kids. And on top of that, our plan will be in place. We will, we will make this work. People are going to get sick, kids might get sick, staff might get sick, community members. I mean, I don't think we all can be naive enough to think that it's not going to happen. But we can minimize that, we can provide options for our families, and we can support the heck out of people throughout the process. And I think having options for kids to give any sense of normalcy if they choose to do that, and we've talked about it as a group, the concern for the future of our, of our kids. When you think about our primary learners, when you think about the kids from a mental health standpoint, depression, anxiety, stress, it's, you know, the concern about what's that impact going to be long after COVID? Your kids are finished out in the first grade and second grade, learning to read, learning to write, learning to do all the things that we've come to just, you know, expect from year to year to year. So we are going to do everything we can as a district to minimize that long-term impact from an academic and a socially-emotional. And I mean that from our staff as well. Our staff is also, much like all of us, dealing with the new normal. And it's not easy. Our staff are stressed, our staffers are scared. Our staff probably have, you know, deal with their own mental health, compacted. So we just need to look out for each other and take care of each other. And I'm thankful that you will do that. Well, I'll open it up to questions of the board for any of the cabinet members. If you're a committee member, please raise your hand if you're a part of the work. So thank you for all your help, and I'm sure they'd be willing to answer questions too. But I'll send over the board.
I'll start out, and then I'll hand it off to my colleagues. I'll start out and then I'll hand it off to my colleagues. Dr. Schiff and your team, thank you for mobilizing. This plan started mobilizing in April. We started planning in April. I sat in at a schoolwork president meeting, I believe, in May, and so the districts were spinning. Dr. Schiff, you and your leadership mobilized your teams, empowered people, and started people to be proactive. We didn't wait for a date. We started mobilizing and coming up with a plan together. While it seems like this was a short summary to the board, Dr. Schiff has given us updates every week. He has sat down, Dr. Baughman has sat down with each and one of us, sometimes painfully, has been very judicious and calm and patient with a lot of our feedback and feedback. We took some of that feedback after the week. We have interacted with every piece of this plan since the teams were mobilized. We most recently spent all day last Monday going over some additional feedback where we had additional open conversations about the plan. I am so thankful for our community and our school community and the 100 people that stepped up to the plate, got into their arena, and came up with a solution. I can't thank you enough from the bottom of my heart. It pains all of us. School is everything to these kids. You guys are everything to these people. You're their czar in czar arena. Sometimes you're the only role model that they have. And we just cannot thank you enough for mobilizing, coming together, and at least trying to ensure there's some sort of normalcy. One of the other little assets that we have on our board is to keep a staff at Rush Catholic. It's a nice little resource to have in our pocket. And Dr. Pitu, while not only is he helping in the Rush Catholic community, he takes just time, just his sublists about the time he does with Dr. Schiff as well. Dr. Sander, I think he's got every publication, no demand, there is no public, about every school opening in the entire global economy. And he also shares that with the board as well. So I read other districts' plans. This is the best plan I've seen. This is better than the plans we've seen in our global community. It's better than some of the plans we've seen in Germany. This is one of the best plans that you guys have. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues, Dr. McConnaughton, I cannot tell you how thankful we are for all of you and your efforts.
Dr. Burks, if you don't mind, I'd like to say a few, or I want to echo everything you've just said as far as the real game plan. I am astounded at the level and quality of this plan going forward and what we're attempting to do. I think the protocols that we have in place, we're going to do everything we possibly can to keep our students, our teachers, our staff safe, and I am very, very appreciative. I want to do, I do want to make one or two comments about some accountability issues. So Dr. Baughman, this relates to some of the things that you mentioned with the grading and learning plan. As much as I am very proud of all the great things we did this spring, given the circumstances, I also know that the data shows that our achievement, student performance achievement did have some gaps. And as the chair of the Student Success Committee, it's absolutely prudent that I bring forth the notion to emphasize how student accountability has to take place during these times. With the three modalities, we have to create strong equity among these three modalities. We have to, as you mentioned, have strong rigor, great engagement, and true accountability among students. So I'm recommending to you to work with the TOSSes, to work with your CCC committees, to work with YDA, and to work with the new academic committee that's going to be starting to really examine the grading and learning plan and make changes that are necessary to keep students accountable, whether they are face-to-face, whether they're doing a hybrid situation, or whether they're fully remote. It's absolutely critical that we don't widen that achievement gap even further. The grading and learning plan, the way it is, when students have accountabilities and items count, whether they're checkpoints, formatives, all the way through summatives, if those changes aren't made, I'm fearful that the achievement gap will widen again. And we absolutely have to stay away from that. So that includes a couple of different things that have to happen, I believe, in the classroom or remotely, or the hybrid situation. Students have to be accountable daily. Teachers have to be accountable daily, and that teachers have to be accountable in regards to providing timely and really meaningful feedback to the students to let them know how they're doing, how they're progressing. If there's areas that are weaknesses, how can those be turned into strengths? Again, I can't emphasize enough how crucial it is at this point, you know, everything given equal level, and that equity is among those three modalities. And it starts ultimately with accountability. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thanks, Dr. Schiff.
So I've been working in the hospital through all of this. I had to be at the committee that did how we would use ventilators if we run out of ventilators. We don't want to be in that. I had to argue that a pregnant woman, I thought, had greater value than someone who wasn't pregnant, if we had to shuffle ventilators around. We had a plan in place that if we were overrun, the Yorkville building out here would be used as a hospital setting. I was terrified that I would have patients in the rooms with no ventilators, no way to do the oxygen. That was really scary stuff when all this first started. We've learned a lot since then, and I think everybody in the room and everybody in education should read the CBC's recommendations that came out this year. I think there's really important information that's there, and I think one of the most important things when I get asked about all this is that we have to get back to who's really at risk. Who are we protecting? Who is in danger? Right now, as we see the statistics, it's pretty clear. Our biggest group of people that we're taking care of are 18 offenders. Right now, out of all positive tests, they only represent 6% positive tests. It's a very low number. Out of those, severe disease is less than 0.1%. I think it's important we remember that as we go through this, because there are going to be kids who are not going to wear masks, and there are going to be kids who aren't going to keep their hands from other kids. I suspect there's going to be kids who are going to spit because they've run about it on the internet. There's going to be kids who are going to do stupid things in the bathrooms. We all understand that. But I do think we remember that their relative risk is very, very low. Our biggest risks are for our people who work there, our teachers, our staff. So if we look at those numbers and the statistics on that, for those people between 25 and 55, again, the risk of COVID infection for severe disease is very, very low. As Dr. Schiff mentioned, we do have a number of people that do have comorbidities, and they will have to pay compensation, things that are commided. But for the bulk of us, we know now from looking at all the data and the schools that have gone back to things, Denmark, Germany, Taiwan, we know who we're watching out for. We have that information. So I hope we can reassure people when they go back to school that while there's a risk, there are going to be people who are going to get infected, there are going to be people who are going to show up for school with a sword thrown their way. People are going to show up that have a fever when they get schooled. But I think we all have to remember, while this is an illness, and while this is a severe illness, while this is a very scary thing, for those of us who are working in this environment, the bulk of us are not at that big a risk. The people we should be working out for, the people we need to protect are elderly and the people with severe comorbidities. Unfortunately, for those people over 70 years old, really 75 years old, this is a very serious, very frightened disease. I could tell you that. It's unfortunate, and working in the hospital, I had a knife sore on my nose from wearing TPE for two weeks, and I don't know if you have any other doctors or nurses in here, but it is not a lot of fun when you see people who can't breathe this awful. It's really an awful thing. And it's scary and it's terrible. So as we put all this together and we put this framework together, I think we should be really thinking more in terms of us as a community of people who we're looking out to protect. And the people that we should be protecting are those who are highest risk. And as we go through it, as we think about it, as we talk about it, we are going to have places that we're going to have to make adjustments, we're going to have to make changes. As we look around the room today, Tate tells us that not all of us are 6 feet hardly, that everybody's wearing their mask correctly, and we're the adults here. So the kids are going to have problems, they're going to struggle, it's going to be difficult. Our kids that are kindergartners and wearing their little mask are going to be hard. I saw a kid today who's seven who hasn't had the speech therapy. He was crying in the room today because he had a huge setback. He was having a great deal of difficulty talking from a different district. He loved Mrs. so-and-so, and Mrs. so-and-so hasn't been teaching him, and she's been working with him. His speech was awful. What do we do with that? This is the stuff that scares me as a physician. I'll be honest, and these guys have heard me talk about it. I'm not scared really about COVID, I'm scared what we're leaving behind after this and what's going to happen to the kids. I'm terrified that we're going to have kids who are never going to go out for sports again, they're never going to go out for band again, they're not going to have opportunities at theater. I think these are awful things, and they're going to go on and move forward. I think the consequences of that is going to outweigh 10 years from now with the consequences of COVID happening. So as we move forward and as we talk about it and we think about how we have to protect ourselves and others, think about this community, think about who's at risk, remember that we are going to have mistakes. And the last thing I'm going to say about this is I'm very proud to be part of this district. My client, Cal, 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 Marcell, NOKA, all over the place. And I can assure you that what we've done in this school, I have extremely proud of. People are jealous of what our people have done. I'm very proud to say that I worked with Dr. Schiff for all this. So again, I applaud you guys, I applaud everybody who's going to be in the school, and again, work together as a community, I think we'll all get through this fast. Thanks.
You did a great job. Much better reading. I didn't say you were old, Bob. I said age.
Eric did an actually awesome job, and I really appreciate your expertise in what you present to the community, because I do think that it is who we have to protect and what we're dealt with, and the consequences and what we are leaving behind is very, very significant, a social. I really love that you committees monitoring what's going on, Tim, that we're going to have some of those controls in place. I love the dedication we give of the board, we're actually caring about it and being as the ability to go and adapt and change quickly, which I think is really important to them. There are no guarantees, but tomorrow's going to bring. But I think we can't live in fear, and I think unfortunately, we've created a society right now that we actually do live in fear, and we're thinking the worst, and the whole world's going to end, what's that all going to end? And these kids need to be back in school, they need the social learning, they need the, I think they're saying, the touching, the hugging, all these things that they're missing. These are things that are really tough on having, we've got the curriculum that we have, and we can hopefully give at least a portion of what they actually need. I want to give credit to Heather and her team. I mean, kind of one of the most forgotten parts of education is maintaining all of our buildings and the things that are being done, and your staff does an outstanding job. I mean, every time you take a look around, everything is always clean, it's always neat, whether it be COVID or not, it's great. I look at Mindy and her team and how they handle the finances, the fact that we have money to adapt to a certain number of things, that we aren't desperate, that we try to invest back into the community. Our kids have the tools, they have the tools that they need, and I think we're working collectively together, and I appreciate being on this board. Thank you very much.
I guess just real quick, something that I was concerned about, obviously, being a teacher myself, going to year number 22, after kind of listening to our work session last week, was making sure that we did have accountability on all three levels, for all three different modalities, that that resonated with me. So I definitely think that's something we need to stay on top of as far as the students, with us ending as oddly as we did this year. One thing that I had decided to do, which I normally wouldn't do, but I kept my Google Classroom open this summer, and I said, if you need to chat with me, it's obviously all through Zooms, or it could be recording, or something like that. If you all need to get ahold of me, definitely make sure you email me and say, hey, Mr. Saffner, a couple of us would like to Zoom and talk about, you know, things, because I told them at the end of the year, if you have, if you talk, obviously, like I said, make sure you do this, because I had, you know, my classes were going to about 35 kids, and I had literally at the end of the year, probably about 10 kids had to teach class, whose anxiety was through the roof about just not, just being stuck at home. As far as the teachers, obviously, our mental health is playing into this as well. I would not be remiss, I mean, I would be remiss if I had asked on that. I mean, obviously, I'm a teacher myself. I've thought about it, obviously. The one thing that I've thought, our department, the building I teach with, we meet every week as a department, and I think it's partly more because we miss the social interaction of actually seeing adults and being, you know, so we do our Zoom things. And one conversation that we have had is if you think about, like, you know, obviously, I've tried to teach for 22 years, a lot of people at my school saying, oh, so you're used to it, and some, you know, some people, some teachers, they're doctors, I have certain types of best practices. A lot of the best practices that we've had, you know, that we've implemented, that we've got ingrained in our brain, have really had to kind of flip-flop there, unless I'm missing something over the past 30 months when it comes to, like, you know, buildings and, you know, how they function, and then just something as simple as how teachers discipline, you know, you're not going to be using proximity as a thing anymore. You know, you're not going to be sending all your kids to the door at the same time. So it's just little things like that that, you know, we've kind of brainstormed as teachers, and again, it's just a big change right now in kind of what we've done best practice-wise. But, you know, obviously, I think, just, I've been in this area in education for as long as I have, you know, I think that the resiliency will end up winning out over that, like I said, this plan. And obviously, you all put it for minutes of my time, and I think you should be applauded for it. So thank you.
Just a quick, and it's really, I'm not going to repeat it nearly seven, thirty minutes, it's right spot on. The one thing, though, that I guess mitigation still is important, I mean, school districts that have done well globally have had a very low incidence, but then again, you can look at Israel, who had a disaster, where we just opened it up and let everybody go back, and there was no initiation in place, and that didn't go well. Most of the research shows that any COVID that does show up in a school doesn't usually come from the school, it's from the home to the school. And that's why our parents are going to be really big in this. When I see kids in the clinic all the time, when the parents excited about wearing their mask and they're passing it out to the child, everybody's like, how cute they look, the little ones, is never a problem. It's the parents that come in there moaning about wearing a mask, where the kid is a problem and they're putting on a mask. So it's a total community effort, and there's no doubt about that. How the teachers present that and the classroom is going to make a difference, and how the parent presents that at home. And if we speak with our parents and we explain to them what's going to be required, I hope we can tell them that, that your example is going to set the tone for your child. And that's part of the educational process we have to have, because you're always going to have a fear, you're right, there are difficult times, but in general, I think if we can apply mitigation in a safe way, in a general way, and we can have a positive attitude towards both our educational leaders and from the home community, we're going to have a lot less problems.
And I think the key is people have to be agile, people have to be flexible. You know, even in all of this, if you read, and I know you're all avid readers, this isn't a blank slate. It's not. This will change education forever. So, you know, find opportunities, learn more about yourself. Every single person in this room tonight is really, you are, these children are the most trusted voice. Don't underestimate that. I found myself going after teaching during this crisis as well. I have never enjoyed teaching more than ever because the students because this team is going to do, this team is finding their teachers. So be flexible, learn, look for opportunities. And you have, there's an, anybody in this room is not going to support you and listen to you and come up with a solution. I think that's how we're going to do this. All right, so we need a motion on the table.
Need a resolution. This is a long resolution.
I'd like to read the motion for the resolution.
So a motion to approve the resolution for the District 115, 2020, 21 Fall Reopening Plan and Remote E-Learning Plan as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any additional comments? Let's take a roll call then. Dr. Cusula?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brunner?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yes.
All right, and then to 2021 Calendar Modification.
So this is in support of that. So we are, you can see the calendar recommendations. One of them is to replace the November 3rd Election Day, which is now a non-districtive day. Actually, not district, a penance day. And we are suggesting that that moves to the end of the school year. So the last day of student attendance would be May 27th. But then Institute Day now is Friday, the 28th or 20th. And additionally, we are asking that the first day of school be moved to August 20th. So we would have three Institute Days. Then we would have August 18th and 19th. As remote learning days for our staff. And then we would come back on August 31st with one additional remote learning day. Those days do not have to be made up. And it still would provide us two remaining days that these are the stretch of hours.
Any other motions, please?
Motion to approve the 2021 District 115 Calendar Modifications as presented.
Second.
Move in second. Any additional comments?
Yeah, I think some people might wonder why we, you know, why would you put a day at the end of the year for like an Institute Day? You know, some people might think, well, that doesn't make a lot of sense. You're having one at the end of the year. The districts that I've been in, the last one, the current one, have been dealt. We didn't do it this year, but we had done it in previous years. And we were actually able to get a very good jump on the following year for what we wanted to do in that Institute Day. So I just don't want people to think that that Institute Day is just, you're showing up today and packing in for the following year. These teachers are definitely putting in work for the following years. So I just wanted to make that point.
All those are there?
Aye.
Any votes? No questions. And we have some AP Psychology Research.
Yeah, this was an item that was discussed back in May. And the item was placed on display for 30 days.
Motion to approve the purchase of the advanced placement AP Psychology Resources. Second.
Move in second. Any additional comments? Roll call, please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brunner?
Yes.
Dr. Katusula?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burke?
Yes.
And we have approval of a 90% co-insurance level for District 115 Annual Property Insurance renewal for District 21. Any other motion?
Motion to approve the switch to a 90% co-insurance level for District 115. That's why 21 car payment insurance renewal.
Second.
Move in second. Any additional comments? Jackson, roll call, please.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brunner?
Yes.
Dr. Cusula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burke?
Yes.
And then last, we have Photography Venture Selection. Any other motion?
Motion to approve the Photography Committee's recommendation to enter into a three-year contract with HR Imaging to provide photography services beginning on July 28, 2020 and ending on June 30, 2023.
Second.
Move in second. Any additional comments?
I just want to thank Mandy and Mike and the team as well as the parents who donated their time as well to serve on these committees. But I think if they, much, or unlike some other districts, I think the value of collaboration, the value of community input and getting people involved in the work that we do is so essential. It's just another example of the importance of that and the positive outcomes that come as a result. So thank you.
And we'll need a roll call for this. Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brunner?
Yes.
Dr. Cusula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. And then we have one item for new business. Request for personnel and resources to support 2021.
Yeah, so now that the plans have been approved by the board, we're coming to you for a number of additional items. And these are really not to exceed items for the year and will be reviewed at the end of the year. So as we, when we look at tutoring hours of 1,562 hours for $50,000, we are looking for not to exceed for 10 custodians. We have on there $650,000 for custodian. The greatest hope for that number is that we can look at when we start scheduling individuals, where we could schedule and block some periods of time. So maybe they're part-time employees or $5 employee, whatever that is. But again, that's a not to exceed number. There's two lunch distribution staff. For those families who pick e-learning or hybrid, we're going to look to still provide, we can still purchase lunch for multi-day meals and pick them up from centralized locations. So having staff available to do that. We talked about the lunchroom recess supervision. And Nick mentioned how we're going to have different zones. And certainly, we're going to have increased lunchroom areas, especially as you get to the middle and the high school level. So looking for more support and supervision. We're going to try and look at staff who might be interested to do an internal supervision to the school day, much like they do now at the high school, middle school, and sometimes at the elementary level. But there's $140,000 for supervision. We're asking for a 25 health coordinator to assist with obviously the health-related training, day-to-day protocols, substituting when we need him or her. We're also asking for one full-time substitute nurse for $31,000. Call self-certification monitors. As the board is aware, prior to the school day beginning, all staff and students will be required to self-certify both on the temperature as well as the symptom check. But we need to have individuals that are on campus who receive the report ahead of time so that when James and Jason Sefner shows up to work and they didn't self-certify, we're stopping them at the door and we're doing the check there. And either home, they can come in or they have to return home. So we need monitors for each of those buildings to do that. And as I said, those are do not exceed numbers. But we'll obviously remain, quite remain personally responsible to the board, to our taxpayers. You know, Mike and Mandy have done a tremendous job of tracking COVID-related expenses. I think it's important for the board to know that if we go back from March to end of June, there's been about a $300,000 increase in expenses for COVID-related items. As we move forward, you know, we're looking at the numbers that I provided as well as the things that Heather's been talking about, plexiglass and shields and masks. You know, we're looking at about a $1.6 million worth of expenses to start the school year as we move into the year and throughout the year. Much of that has to do with personnel. When you think about the items I just listed with custodians, you think about substitute nurses, you think about substitutes that the board proved earlier today with the pay increase. And there's going to be some, some unknowns out there that are going to come up as the year goes on. We're anticipating right now about $262,000 of reimbursement from the care debt. But again, it's a small dent into the amount of expenses. And that is, it's also fair to say that none of that 1.6 or 1.8 takes into account any of the cost statements. Or when we look at the cost of new teachers versus those who left, there might be a $200,000 statement. When you look at some of the strategic plan items that we have dedicated money for, for some of the contingency dollars. So when we provide a number of expenses, it doesn't mean the sky is falling with our overall budget. And certainly not money we are planning for or excited to spend, but it's the reality to get kids and staff back in schools and to keep them safe and to be able to minimize achievement gaps and support the mental health of our employees and our kids. But we want to go back, asking for, you know, you think about social workers, think about sponsors, think about the needs of our staff and our students. I don't know what it's going to look like in September, October. And that's why those committees will be so insurmountable to be saying, we need more support in these areas or less support or moving support. You know, we talked about that. There might be times where we're taking existing employees and reviewing other work. So it's not always about expenses. It's not always about new, but it's certainly to be different. I think it's fair for the board to see what we're asking and certainly for our community to see what we're asking and know the true cost behind it.
Appreciate it. Appreciate the transparency.
If so, need a motion?
Motion to approve the request for additional staffing and resources as presented. Second.
Move in second. Any additional comments? Roll call, please. Dr. Brunner?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Cusula?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yes.
And then Superintendent Board, please.
Not being significant with celebration reviews, what is significant is for my athletic and IHSA at the middle school level, we gave you word that that is the campaign that for the fall. So that is significant for students that age well with kids. It's anticipated that IHSA is going to meet Wednesday this week. But we will see what direction and parameters come with that. But we don't have any other information regarding what that's going to look like. But a lot of speculation, a lot of talk, but nothing definitive. We are working closely with our music department to provide opportunities for kids this school year. Heather's been in contact with Victor and Vic and I and Melinda and all that. And we are ordering masks for our music. We have specific music-related masks. We can hold free instruments themselves. And we're also working with our music teacher and Victor to provide shields for our instructors. Request of them. So a lot of unique things going on, but a lot of unanswered questions related to finding out some extra papers. I did have a, I meet weekly with the county and regional superintendents as well as a group up north, but today we had the county one. And then there are some districts that are discussing, even if IHSA does not provide a fall season of such, they're likely to provide intramurals and other activities. I think that's something we'll have to have discussions with the board about over the next few weeks. Certainly, we don't want to risk or provide an increased risk to our students. And if IHSA and other organizations are side away from it. But just so you know, that other districts are doing that or looking to do that. I haven't talked to our high school or our middle school administration of where they stand on that or what their thoughts are on what they hear. But just so you know, that is, that is all good. But our regional office has been a great source of support and direction and finding answers for us as well as the other trying superintendents. Aggregates networking and everyone's doing the same things. Get those interviews shut. Our parents are feeling the same thing, other communities, our staff and administration, and certainly our kids and board of the extension. And thank you to the board for all your time as well and your thought leadership and pushing back and a lot of hard questions. But we appreciate that. In spirit, conversations.
Thank you, Dr. Schumacher. And then we have an executive session. We don't anticipate any action, but we need a roll call for that. Dr. Cusula?
Motion to move into executive session for purposes of consulting and parting with a light conversation. This is for performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public property of the municipal body, including here in Pennsylvania, who are playing large against an employee of a public property or against legal counsel of the municipal jury. Five ILC, that's one slash two, see one.
Second.
Roll call, please. Dr. Cusula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brunner?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yes.
Yeah. We're just going to clear the room.
Clear the room. So we're going to take about five minutes and then we're going to ask everyone basically to leave. If you're going next door, Lauren serves her a drink. Nothing's going to come out of this. Thank you, everybody.